Five o'clock. And I'd like to open, uh... So we're gonna do the pledge, and even though it's not on the agenda, we shall do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You can never pledge too much.
I know, that's right. Just twice remaining to have commissioners report. Okay. All right, this is a work session of city council to hear reports on the budget. From, uh, city manager will begin, and then the staff will join in.
All right. Good afternoon, mayor and council and everybody else. So before, before staff kicks off talking about the different, uh, budget presentations that you have in front of you, I wanted to take a minute just to, um, summarize, if you will, for the benefit of people that may not be familiar or might be tuning in, sort of the process that would be undertaken here over the next two days, hopefully. So as you know, we have posted today's budget workshop, tomorrow, Tuesday, and also Wednesday. Historically, these conversations have taken only two days. But we wanted to post for a third day, not knowing how much questions or dialogue would occur with a new city manager, a new mayor, and a new council member. So however, our goal is to try and get through them in two days. And ultimately, if we're able to do that, we'll just cancel the meeting on Wednesday. And so part of which, part of what you can expect to hear just throughout the, the next two days, of course, as you're familiar, is the different department directors going through their budgets. And Gilbert will provide an overall view of the general fund. But one of the things that I wanted to bring to your attention or to be on the lookout for is some of the big priority items that at least I've been exposed to in the almost month that I've been here. And so, for example, um, when Cheryl goes through the health fund conversation, I knew that coming into this job, the health insurance was gonna be a big priority, and to be on the lookout for what we're looking to do there. Uh, in the month that I've been here, we've also discussed some pretty big topics such as drainage. And so we've included some funds for a drainage master plan, so be on the lookout for that when Donald gives his presentation. Um, you've also discussed items related to streets, specifically street maintenance. And so we've got a couple of initiatives that Donald will also go through as part of his presentation that we've incorporated in the budget. Um, of course, public safety and emergency preparedness has also come up. Um, we've talked about generators, and there are a few other issues too that staff will go through that we believe will make us better prepared in case something else happens. Um, and there'll be others. But my point is that I want you to feel, uh, reassured that, uh, the budget in just the month and a few days that I've been here, Gilbert and I have sat down to truly, to truly try and make sure that it meets your expectations of the big priority items that, that you have. Um, one of the things that you won't hear about today is personnel and staff. Um, I want a little bit more time to fine tune that. And so at our July 2nd council meeting, I'll have a city manager's report. While I'll personally go over personnel, meaning the number of employees, the position count, and also go over some reorganizations, um, that I want to undertake, uh, as part of fiscal year 20. And so I'll go through that, um, on, and on July 2nd. Um, so with that, I'll turn it over to Gilbert unless y'all have any questions on anything. Um, you should have, I, I forgot to mention that you have the binder, of course, in front of you, the printouts. Um, that way you can feel free to take it, write as many notes as you like. Um, and if you need any more copies, just let us know. There's a couple of trees outside that we can really use, so.
They're too small.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Good evening.
Good evening.
We're back at it again. Short time, huh? Uh, a little quick disclaimer, you know me. Um, it's a work in progress, as Mr. Garza's mentioned. There's some things still not incorporated in the budget. So it's a fluent budget. It's still being worked on, uh, as Mr. Garza mentioned, come back in July. So but guarantee you by August the 6th, you will have a, a final budget. And with all the details, all the revenues, all expenses, everybody wants to start digging into each level. As you know, I don't get the final numbers of certified road to July 25th. So, you know, I did play the numbers out as best I can. I did get some reports. I have some comments about that. Uh, I'm still misogynizing the 2019 projected numbers. So, uh, it's a fluent budget. Still, I'll be doing that too by the second week of July, so. And of course, last part is, it'll be a balanced budget. as you all know, I go through this high level deal. And this is a high level. The purpose of this budget, let me just restate this, is not to dial into real downs of the weeds. It's tell you, gives you overview. This is the course of the city manager direction with the budget. It's not intended to, to give you way down the weeds, uh, but just a kind of a vision, a long, high view. Make sure, if you have any questions, that's the purpose is, is, is meetings, to talk about it, to give directions to the city manager. So, I'm gonna take, start with the revenues. I always do this. I know I probably bore some of y'all, but I like this. Yes, ma'am?
I'd like to interrupt you for just a second.
You right ahead, it's, it's your time.
We have all this great technology in front of us. Behind us, we have where you are, but I don't know how to turn this thing on to be where you are.
Hit the button.
Is it, oh, that I need to flip the button?
2019 guy.
There we go.
Thank you, that will be much less distracting to me trying to follow pages.
It'd be pretty hard, yeah.
And since you were the first presentation, and we're gonna have two days of this, I wanted to know.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up now.
Thank you, doctor.
That's the extent of my tech savvy.
All right. I'm gonna start out with the revenue from a high level, kind of give you a glimpse of what I think, what's gonna happen there. I'm gonna show the all-inclusive budget, all-inclusive budget. Ladies and gentlemen, to me, again, I'm defining that, it's all the one-time money, all the new programs at a high level. And then I will strip those new programs out and the one-time and give you a baseline budget so you compare to last year, where you're at. So did the budget grow or did it decrease? Then I'll talk about the one-time expenses. After that, it's not up here, but I'm bringing it back, all back together so you can see the numbers playing out again. And I ended up with the fund balance, what I think we're gonna end up the year with, okay? Interrupt me anytime you want. Okay. I hope this works, 'cause I've been having a little... Nope, there it is. Did not work. All right. Excuse me, one minute. Let's see if it does it again. So, well, I'll tell you what, I work with that right now. That pink chart, I think you have your layout. Oh, one thing I forgot to tell you, that just because we're having this work session, tomorrow work session, you're gonna have a lot of sessions in August and September to talk about it. So this is not the only time to talk about it. So if there's a lot of questions coming up, you, you know, when the numbers come out, there'd be plenty of time to talk about it in August, September. That pink, I guess that's Fuchsia pink, that's sales tax. That's about $16 million sales tax. It's about 33% of the city budget. You have property taxes, about $16 million, that's 32%. And you got franchise tax, close to 5.8. Those three numbers are 77% of the total revenue budget. That's the big bulk of it. Other financial sources, 7.5, those are transfers in from other funds. Charges for ambulance, that's one specific line item, 9.1.9 million dollars. The county contract, stay flat, 1.8. Fining forfeiture, municipal court, revenue, about $1 million. Licensing permits, $900,000. Intergovernmental revenue, basically those like transfer from, uh, sales tax, government corporation. Or there might be some entities out there paying a little taxes. Then you got charges for services and miscellaneous. Miscellaneous, basically, uh, majority of that is miscellaneous revenue.
Gilbert?
Yes, ma'am?
I just have a question on that one, uh, slide. The Victoria, Victoria County fire contract, that's a sure contract?
That's a contract, yes, ma'am.
But we, we, we're for sure on that one, 'cause sometimes, you know, we've had problems with that in the past.
Absolutely, uh, and, uh...
It, it automatically renewed.
Okay.
So we're good for another year.
Okay, let's just, I'm gonna double check.
One minute, start this thing again. Gotta go along, that's for wrong.
Old school style, just go through the paper copy.
Dr. Young, can you help him?
He needs a doctor.
Meeting adjourned.
So that renewal contract is just one time? Are we gonna be doing, uh, a look at it next time, or is it just gonna be this one time? Like, you know, it renews every year?
Sure. Well, I'm, I'm not, obviously, I'm not sure what the desire of the commission or the council is as it relates to that contract. I haven't been a part of any conversations with any of you about it. Um, so from my understanding, it just automatically renewed for another year. If the council wants to have further dialogue on that specific contract and what to do after this following year, we could have that conversation at a later date once.
Just wanted to know.
Okay. We've had some discussion on it and expected it to renew, so.
Do you wanna correct me?
No, no, I'm not gonna correct you. I just wanted to add that in May is a period when the city and/or the county can, um, invoke a, a decision on that contract if they wanna discuss or just let it roll over and continue to renew. So it's, it's a May timeframe.
Okay.
When, when we look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Sales tax. What I'm gonna do right now is go through the high levels and revenue category. Sales tax for 2020, I'm budgeting the same level as 2019. Well, why, Gilbert? Okay. Well, you, you, you recognize this draft. And real quick, on this, I'm projecting sales tax for 2019 to come in around 16.6 versus the budget of 16.3, about $337,000 delta there, higher than the budget. However, you don't have this slide, but usually I pay attention to Dallas feds. I look at the report summary on a quarterly, monthly basis. And basically, their manufacturing production expansion has slowed down compared to last year. If you see this area right out here, you can see from beginning 18 to 19, it starts going slowly towards downward directions. Not saying it's stopping, it's saying it's slowing down that expansion. But the key point that kind of worries me is this graph. Sorry if I wrote on it. You got services revenues. Basically, those are restaurants, hotels, stuff like that. And you got retail sales, pretty straightforward. If you can see those from 2018 to 2019, there's an incline. It's not a recession and nothing like that, but it's a slowdown. So as a result of those items, plus other things I gauge on a monthly basis and quarterly basis, you know, I'm not comfortable to say we're gonna have a 3% increase over last year. I, I like to keep it flat. That's being kind of liberal conservative, not conservative. To me, I would have notched it down in, uh, a percent and one and a half, which I'm still contemplating. Depends, like I, I know I'll be okay this year, but folks, uh, if you know what's gonna happen another year from now, I usually have a better feeling than this, but this is something different we're working with. So don't be surprised, come August the 6th, I might have a different number showing up there, okay? Property taxes. That number really represents a decrease in adware and taxes to have adjusted down for budgetary trend. But let's talk about the tax rate. Right now, as I mentioned earlier, I've been looking at the Victoria County appraisal numbers. It's coming about 1, 4.8%, okay? How I came up with that number is that on the left-hand side, it's last year's certified road as July 25th. As of June the 12th, this, this past month, I'm showing $3.7 billion compared to 3.5. Of course, that's a 4.3% increase. I guarantee you, that number's probably be keeping moving, probably downward or upward. The reason why it's up, I'm not giving either one, because there's a huge value out there that's still, I'm gauging it. It's, it's dealing with the minerals and industrial. Those are the big dollar ones. And they privatized that business out, and somebody else is doing those. I get them on a monthly basis, but they're always moving. Right now, as of last week, they were showing a 20% increase. I'm not using a 20% increase. These numbers only include 10% of that value increase. So if it comes in higher, guess what, that'd be a, a little higher. But still, as you know my philosophy, right now, we've been working on the effective tax rate. If it comes in higher, guess what, the tax rate, effective tax rate will go down. So it kind of evens itself out, helps out overall. But if you, the new improvements are looking around $20 million. With that on top of the certified tax rate from last year, I think this one's gonna be, you're looking at about 3.7 billion compared to 3.5 billion, which is that 1, 4.8% increase, okay? Moving forward, with that case, I'm coming up with those numbers around a 59.47% tax rate. Of course, the MNO's 34.41, debt service is 25.06. One penny at 97, 97% collection rate is $357,000. Uh, last year's tax rate is 62.24, that's a drop right now of 2.77. Now, that might go down a little further. And keep in mind, uh, council, uh, remember, we've been talking about a budget, I mean, a bond sale in the CIP. We have a $2 million CIP, uh, issue incorporated in this whole budget. It does not affect the tax rate, 'cause you have some growth in the tax rate, I mean, appraised values. Of course, the effective tax rate, it's the same level as the proposed tax rate, which is 59.47. The rollback, it's still at 61.15, which is greater than the proposed tax rate. I know some of y'all been aware of what's going on in Austin. That law doesn't take effect till, uh, January 2020. That 1.68 rollback is based on the city policy of keeping a 5% increase. State is 8. But next year, that number's gonna be much smaller. If you'd apply the 1.35% or the 3.5%, that'd have been about 1.16. The only time you get any issue with that, if you start increasing your tax rate, of course. Or issue debt above your, your debt capacity portion of it. Any questions? So bottom line, as all this conversation, I could just say tax rate will be set at the effective tax rate, which is 59.47. And the tax rate dropped from, dropped from last year to by 2.77 cents, okay? Let's go back and let's talk about the rest of them. Franchise tax went up by $270,000. Basically, that's your mainly republic and waste management. Uh, other financing sources, the only reason that went up is 'cause we have a fund called the Workman's Comp Fund that we feed into to pay off claims and stuff like that. It has grown over the years. I got about a 26-month reserve in there. I feel like I need to bring some of that back. I like to keep more, about a 15 months, slightly over a year. So that's $130,000 coming back to the general, to the general fund. That's the one-time money. Ambulance, the reason it's down $23,000 is because of trend. Fire contract, we mentioned, talked about it, staying at the same level as last year. Fining forfeiture is decreased by $87,000. I don't know if you recall, years ago, we used to have a warrant roundup. We don't have that anymore. We have moved towards a docket where the judge sits down with the, uh, client per se, and just talk it out and see to get that cost adjusted or waived. She has, they changed the law a year ago, they can do that. And our tickets are a little slight lower than last year, so that's why you have that decrease. Licensing permits, 41,000, oh, 42,000. Two type of revenues causing that. One is your liquor license permit or alcohol rebates from the states are coming in less. Usually be higher during worry time, but it's just, it's not working out this way. The other one is your merchandise, uh, it's called, those arcade machines, you, you put quarters in all, well, that's down. And I was like, wow. But anyway, that's 42,000 there. Intergovernmental government, basically 57,000, a result of an increase in sales tax, government corporation revenue. Charges for services, this $450,000 is a one-time money, which causes that variance of $434,000. There is an annual program, as you recall, we enter with the state, the health services for an amnesty reimbursement. Last year, we didn't have budget that number, but we got about a half a million dollars. We took that half a million dollars, as we recall, we bought pumpers. This year, I decided to go ahead and budget it, because the fire department's gonna talk about a project, which is a one-time project, which matches this, about some building improvements. That's $450,000, that's why it sticks out that way. If, and the reason I, it's, I'm hesitant to continue, I don't know when that money's gonna dry up. So it's, uh, last year we got 500, this time I put 450, 'cause every time it keeps drilling down. The miscellaneous, the $200,000 increase is basically interest revenue causing that. I mean, it's great, but it's no, you can't always gamble on that all the time. So bottom line, you're looking at about a $49 million budget revenue compared to 19, 2019 budget of 48.2. So you had an increase of $897,000, a 1.9% increase. To look at that a little more closely, those were the same numbers. The only thing I'm doing here, folks, is just backing out the one-time money and give you a more perspective on reoccurring. What can we expect from the reoccurring? On the reoccurring side, it shows a different picture, $316,000, which basically your franchise and interest revenue that's caused of that variance. So instead of having that 2% increase, you really got barely a happy percent increase from last year, okay? Tax rate, I'm not gonna go through it again, I'm just saying that the effective tax rate equals the total proposed tax rate. It's a drop of 2.77. I've showed you this before, where 58% of the tax rate would go to, to pay for maintenance and operating expenses. 42% would go to the debt side. And of course, you know, 59% go to public safety, 15 to public works, 6% to parks, 7% to general administration, about 5% development services, 4.6 to library, and of course, non-departmental, .82 cents. I'm going through this quick, 'cause y'all seen this, now I'll stop. Okay. All right. This is expenditure. Couple of things I wanna highlight, so everybody's on the same page. It's a couple of things, is that when I'm, I'm calling a division, it might be different to the other people, you know? And that's fine, and I, I like those questions because it keeps me on my feet. But for example, uh, public safety, you know, you only think about PD and fire, but really, in my definition of, of division, public safety includes municipal court in there. So I got all those as a division. Public works is a street engineering traffic, so that's a division itself. That's how I'm relating to these. The second part, that I guarantee you, if you try to tie these numbers back to individual department or car, or funds, they're not gonna drive. One basic reason, as Mr. Garza mentioned earlier, I've sent out numbers to, to department heads, but we continue working on the budget. So there might be some things in here that are not incorporated in the department heads. And there's one major one, which he's, what I'm gonna talk about, Cheryl's gonna talk about, which is basically the shifting some of the health premium costs from the employee over to the employer, the city, okay? That's a big difference. But I'll get through it, Cheryl's gonna mention it more. So, and compare the 20 budget to the 19 budget, you're looking at a $616,000 increase. Remember, this is all-inclusive, all lumped in, one-time money, new programs, everything else, okay? Public safety went up 897,000. Public works, 524,000. Parks went down by 186,000. General administration, basically city managed legal secretary, building service custodial, PIO, went down by 127,000. Development services, 36,000. Library went up 214,000. And of course, non-departmental went down, $670,000. I can go through each individual, but I don't think I'll let the department heads go through their perspective presentation so they can tell you each line. What I'm gonna do, I'm gonna keep at the high level. But I do have the information, y'all, I, I believe y'all got copies of this, so y'all have it on to you as well. So what makes up the $616,000? Basically, personnel went down by $183,000. It's a combination of what I call, I use the terminology a lot, baseline adjustments. Basically, when we approved the budget last year, and this is a Photoshop, this, this is your budget that was set at this time. I'm redoing this budget now, so I gotta look back, who, maybe somebody retired, uh, somebody left at a higher pay or came in lower pay, uh, somebody that take the health insurance. So those, what I'm calling, oh, change of TMRS dropped as well. That is what I call baseline budget, you know, that's what's changing. The added $215,000 is the cost of the general fund by shifting over the cost, reducing the employees' costs on the premiums and shifting it to the city. That's, that's neat right there, and I'll get that in a minute. So you took that 3.99 reduction plus the new 2.15, that's your variance, okay? Any questions? On the MNO side, you had an increase in supplies, basically, excuse me, dealing with PD, fire, and parks. Striping program, uh, was adjusted downward by $40,000. We buying less vehicles, 1457,000. There's a $60,000 payment data. Let me try to explain that, now, Mr. Garza or Donald needs to jump up here, but it's out of my league. Basically, we trying to get more scientific in how we wanna grade our streets. And one of the proposals Mr. Garza doing is probably get somebody from the outside and look at that avenue instead of going in street by street and just looking at it. Let's get some scientific data on what kind, what's underneath those, those payments? If where should it be classified as a grading system? Do you wanna add me something else, Mr. Garza, or that's kind of something?
We can get to it when Donald goes to his presentation.
I'm just being counter. Okay. Then we have $200,000 for drainage, uh, master plan in there too as well. Those variables add up to that 200, negative 221. On the transfer, there's an increase to the CIP above last year of 512, based on the CIP program that we're currently seeing. Will that change? Could change, depends on council decides what they wanna do moving forward. But right now, that's what's in there right now. We have an additional $22,000 in health savings account contribution. What that is, is that anybody, remember last year we did the $500,000 who was employed as of December 31st, 2018? Well, Mr. Garza started looking at, of course, from a different eye. And I said, what, what, what happened to the new folks who came in, you know, after January? Well, that will help take care of that issue. Anybody who's hired from January through December of '31 will get that as well. Does that make sense? And that's still being worked on a little bit, okay? But right now, it's $22,000. That's just in general fund, there's other money in different funds, okay? That's new. Uh, let's see, the ELC counter with the contract went up about $11,000. What decreased is, of course, we don't have the half a million dollars health savings account transfer from last year and the one-time money that we sent over to the health fund for working capital. All those variables add up to that negative 1.91. On the capital, basically, the two, yeah, two items. Fire department's looking at a building improvements, uh, projects, close to 900,000, over slightly over $900,000. And of course, library has some building improvements, that's $200,000. And they'll get into very detail. Okay? Moving on. All right. A standard question, in order to, yes, ma'am?
On the workers' comp, that 200 and...
2.50?
The 2.36 that you've got here is a credit on the transfer? How does that apply to the 129?
That's not workers' comp, that was for working capital for, for the insurance fund.
Oh, okay.
So WC is not workers' comp, it's working capital for the insurance fund.
Yeah, yeah, work, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, well, it just kind of looked like.
No, it is, but it's like a...
Yeah, WC and WC.
It's my weird thoughts.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, every y'all go through the same question. In order to figure out really, let's, let's clear the, the, the smoke and tell me from a baseline purpose, last year, Gilbert, I left you at this level. Where we looking at this level at the bottom line in comparison on that? So basically, I just showed you the all-inclusive budget, you know, 19 had 52.9 million dollars. And I proposed a 20, or Mr. Garza proposed in a 2020 budget right now, a 53.5, increase of $616,000. I'm gonna strip away the one-time money, bring it down to recurring budget. But keep in mind, that $48 million includes new reoccurring programs. So let's take those out. And that's that $215,000 was telling you about, about the health fund, that we're gonna shift the costs over to the city, kind of help out the employees' bottom line. When you do that, when you compare apples and apples, or last year's, uh, baseline of 47.9 to this year's baseline of 47.88, you kind of almost break it even, only it, it went down by $25,000. Does that make sense? So that's what you're dealing with from last year, is, okay, how do we go from last year? We went down by $25,000, basically. What makes up that $25,000? Well, public safety overall, just bear with me right... Well, public safety overall, just bear with me, right now went down by $238,000. Public works went up by 202. Parks went up by 37,000. General administration went down by 125,000. Development service went up by 37,000. Library went up 16,000. And non-departmental went up by $44,000. So payroll went down, that $333,000, which I showed you earlier. M and O went up 415,000. Capital went down 41. All those numbers equate to that $25,000. But bring it to more of a, something you can relate to. The first two items are your payroll. Those two numbers add up to the reduction in $399,000. And I broke it down into, because I wanted y'all to understand, a half of that cost is because employees, about 124 around there, decided to not take the city's insurance. Okay? The remaining costs are basically people retire who were, who are brought, new person was brought in, maybe a lower pay or whatever the case might be, TMRS is a reduction. So those two numbers add up to your reoccurring decrease of 399. Okay? Any questions? And this M and O side, remember I said it went up 415? Well, this majority, that's what's really causing it there is increase in supplies, as I mentioned. PD SWAT, fire uniform, parks, botanical supplies. We had decreased, I decreased county jail contract. I don't know if y'all remember, over the years, it always came in under. So I figured, okay, I'm going to bring it down a tad. I brought it down by $60,000.
As you go through the presentation, let's try and not be repetitive because a lot of the department heads are going to be talking about the same things. So let's try and kind of.
All right. Lights went up, increase, lease program. This is not going to be talked about by the departments. This year, we're trying to do something different. Instead of buying vehicles outright, we thought about trying to get into a lease program with enterprise. We've been working on this the past, oh, let's see, five months. And basically, what the benefits are here is that instead of us using our cash outflow to go buy them, we get on the lease program. For example, we've got about, I believe, 12 vehicles we have identified. We're going to do a pilot program. That cost is around $304,000 to go buy them outright. If you lease it with enterprise over the five-year period, it'll cost you about $10,000. So I'm using their capital. So I thought that was pretty cheap. One. Second, they have a fixed rate on the repair and maintenance that we would like to get into as well. In other words, on a certain vehicle, maybe they charge us $34 a month, flat rate. Whatever maintenance repair happens to a vehicle, it's their nickel. If they have water pump out, everything else out, it's their nickel. We just got to pay that flat monthly rate. What we are responsible is any damages if we drive the vehicle wrong. That's all it stood. The other item that's real positive about this is that there's a salvage value you well know any vehicle has. But in order to make it work, you got to have a proactive program. And this one, Roger and Daryl will be very involved where, at any given time within that life of that vehicle, it can be replaced and capture that high value of the vehicle and get that profit on that sale, turn it back and add it to a new vehicle lease program and reduce that cost. Does that make sense? Or you pocket the numbers, you still got to pay it out. So I think it's a great program. Biggest thing here, you reduce your cash flow. You don't have to fork out $300,000 at one time. So I think we're going to try this 12 vehicles as a pilot. If it works, we plan to expand that across the fleet. There are some programs, are some vehicles, I don't think you can try and do it. You got heavy equipment that, I don't think they want to trust you on those type of rentals, stuff like that. But anyway, I think it's a positive program. I think we're going to try it. If everything goes well, if y'all decide, and the contract will go before y'all know, I think sometime July or August.
Did I understand you earlier to say you will ultimately have fewer vehicles?
No, no, sir.
Or you're not buying it?
I'm not buying vehicles. And whatever happens at the end of the month, at the end of the lease program, well, it just, they take over. If I want to buy it, I can buy it for the values at that time. So give us another play, back to your point, Mayor, that at any given time, we want to adjust our fleet, we could. Okay?
Are these vehicles, the, I guess, you're not really talking about police or fire vehicles?
No, no, ma'am. Let me give you an example.
Vehicles or something like that?
Like engineers, two half-ton pickup, straightforward. Inspection escapes, parks pickups.
So nothing with any special customization?
Absolutely not. And that's what gets kind of, like I said, if you get into those three tons, four tons, you got a piece of equipment on it, and it's hard to keep it without any dings. So you might want to go ahead and buy those and just keep those yourself. If this works out, great. One thing we're looking at is expanding this maybe to the PD. I know JJ is happy about this. Not the frontline vehicles, I'm talking about detective cars. Okay? If it works out great, which hopefully I think it will.
Is this like for a one-year program?
This is, no, the contract would be a five-year.
Okay. And what about the mileage, Gilbert?
We picked the mileage. In other words, the numbers I got is that within the five years, we want this type of mileage, this type of vehicle, and they have the scale. In other words, it's locked in. Once you sign that contract, it's locked. And the numbers I have is from their quoted numbers on the vehicles that it gave us. And that's why I was concerned, it's like, this can't be right. And we, you're letting use your money, and all they got to pay you is $10,000. But it works out that way.
Okay. And that was 10,000 per vehicle, right?
No, that's overall.
Oh, really? Wow.
Yeah. For example, if I bought it, $304,000. Over a five-year period of the program itself, it would have been $314,000. That's, that's the amount of difference of that.
Thank you.
Okay. That's that. Billing, demolitions went up. The only reason though, the striping is here because, as you recall, last year, it was considered one-time. Mr. Garza was trying to put it back in as maybe a recurrent. It might not be the same level of dollars every year, but it's trying to be a more recurring expenditure, more proactive. Everything else can talk for itself. All those numbers will add up to $25,000. Any other questions? Okay. Basically, on the reoccurring, here is that, as you recall, we had two health plans. Each health plan had an allocation percentage for the city versus employee. Plan one, 72% was the city, 28% was the employee portion of it. Plan two, city's 80, employees 20. Mr. Garza came up, so let's do 8515 for all the plans, no matter which plans it is. The general fund cost is 215. Overall, I think it's probably slightly over $300,000. The other funds are picking the difference up. That's all we have for right now. Any other questions? Okay? One-time expenses.
Is the premium going to be available to the people that have not picked it up yet? Like if they didn't take the health insurance last year?
For new enrolled, yeah, yeah.
Only for new enrollees, not for the existing, not for an existing employee?
It'll apply for existing and new.
So that, is that number including everybody or is that just for the ones that we have right now?
Right now, that number that.
The 215?
Yeah. It's a projection just based on what type of enrollment we'll have.
That's all it is.
And every year, that's, it's a guess.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to know if they were going to be able to apply, if they had said no in the past.
Sure.
They can apply now?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah. And of course, we'll have open enrollment in the fall.
Right.
In the flash winter.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Good.
Okay. One time, and I'm not planning to go in details. We've got about $5.4 million in here. General administration side, there's about $46,000. Each department will go through their correspondent. But on the general administration side, we've got some building improvements in city manager. Legal has some building improvements. Human resources has a salary survey to go out. It's been a while since we go out there and see what the market is. City secretary has some equipment, building services, some various different improvements for this building and the city hall across. PD, that's a big number, 2.3 million. But as you recall, we have a final payment on that Motorola. Is our second and final. On PD side, it's 480. Fire has another portion of it. And some big-ticket items like car videos, I'll let JJ go through all these when he present his budget. Development service is 51,000. Basically, there's two consulting programs there that she wants to do. Keep going. Public works, the biggest number there is that CIP transfer. It's up by $500,000 from last year. There's that payment in drainage master plan we talked about earlier. Parks, library, and the bottom, which is kind of faded out, is that $22,000, the health savings account that we kind of shore up for the new ones. I went that pretty quick. I'll thank the other departments who do a good job and explain the details of it. Yes, ma'am?
And I know we're going to have presentations on it, but that big number, the CIP residential street.
1.7.
Which you said was a transfer, just kind of a refresher of my memory?
Yes, yes, ma'am, thank you.
Was that something we looked at?
Yes, ma'am. As you recall, I have these funds called construction funds. Usually those funds are there to account for any major project, infrastructure project, that's something like this or bonds. I transfer the funds that needed to do the projects into this other fund called construction fund. That will take care, remember we have some street projects and seal code projects? That's the general funds portion.
Okay, so that's an active project.
Yes, ma'am. Well, if y'all prove it, I think Donald will be coming back later to go over the CIP again to finalize the 2020 year. But that, that's what's in there right now. Also, just forgive.
And we're going to have that when you're gone?
Yeah. Okay. We wing it somehow. But also, Ms. Scott, when I sell the bonds, the money go in that same fund for this project.
Okay.
Okay? Okay. I'm going to recap it. I'll bring it back together. Last year, we stopped, we ended with a $47.9 million reoccurring baseline. I just mentioned to y'all, that baseline dropped by $25,000 overall net. I also mentioned to you that we're proposing a $215,000 new program, which is the health fund, switching over the cost from the employee to the employer. And on top of that, I went real quick on the one-time expenses of 5.4. We'll bring you back to the current proposed budget of 53.5 million. Again, that might change by August the 6th. Okay? Any other questions? Yes, sir?
I got a question about the franchise tax. You said it was up because of Republic?
Republic?
Will it always be up now?
Okay, the reason why they're up too is you recall they passed the CIP a while back.
Right.
Increase, well, that's going to increase our revenue too as well. They have also increased in tonnage being disposed there too as well.
But the following year will probably be as?
It'd be up too. If the trend continues.
Right.
Now, you got to.
And Daryl could talk more about that when, when he speaks.
And when I give.
Can't open the cans of warm right now. You got to wait.
And Mark, Ms. Lofton, remember, on August 6th, when I give you that document, you're going to have every line detail, every expense detail, and be traced back to that total revenue. So you can know what makes up that number. Okay. I'm not going to talk about this. Usually, this is more informational. What I usually do here, I take a 2019 baseline budget. I increase it by the CIP index over the years and the population. And I thought, you know, how do we compare today's budget to back in 2009, adjusted for inflation and population? One good example, public safety, back then, if you'd adjust everything to today's dollars, it's 422. Our budget by now is reflecting 425 per capita. So that kind of gives you a gauge. Now, I can tell you, one of these are out of whack because you got to really dive into the details. For example, development service shows 61.63. Right now, it shows 34.78. But as you recall, over the years, we had some readjustment, realign organization. We reduced the cost and everything else, so that's not a fair comparison. But the other one's pretty much in line. But that's just, this is more informational. And also, I'll give you the table just in case you want to check out the numbers. Fund balance. As of today, again, I'm qualified. This might change. My beginning fund balance, when I think of start of the year, is $18 million. If I add my reoccurring revenues of 18.5 and my one-time revenue, take out my reoccurring expenses, which includes the health new cost, subtract my one-time expenses, I have a fund balance of about 13.7. As you well know, we have a 25% fund balance. That equates to about 13.4. So we're now looking at an excess of $298,000. Comparing our recurring revenues to our recurring expenses, we're above that by $417,000. Again, I'm qualified because still, Mr. Garza is still working on this budget. So by August, you will have a fine-tuned number there. Ladies and gentlemen, let's see, I got.
Some of that gap, what he's getting to, some of that gap will be filled when I present the staffing.
Correct.
The personnel items on July 2nd.
And recap, proposing a 5947 tax rate, which is the same number for the effective tax rate right now. We have a $2 million bond issue proposed, shifting $215,000 health premium cost from the employees over to the city side. We continue the current services. And we have one-time money written there of 5.4. That's it, ladies and gentlemen.
For the day?
Well, mine, I don't know about these guys. Now, seriously, you have any questions? If not, you can follow them through, Mr. Garza, we always get back to you on that. Thank you.
That's the idea.
Got to bring it way down. Well, good evening, Mayor, members of council. I get the pleasure of talking about our health fund. This is early because typically we talk about our health fund in the August timeframe. But because of what you've just been presented with the budget and with the direction of Mr. Garza, we wanted to come back forward and talk about how the changes with the health fund, how it matches up, perhaps what our recommendations are in any kind of pay program. So what we bring forward tonight is a proposal that we hope accomplishes providing financial relief to our employees that are enrolled in the city's health plan by decreasing the employee's portion of the monthly premium amount. You've already heard from Gilbert that that would increase the city's contribution side, and I'll get into those numbers here in a minute. What that will hopefully do is allow for more take-home pay for our employees without adding to the reoccurring payroll cost of our budget. So here are the employee-only plans. Due to funding, we're recommending lowering that monthly healthcare premium in lieu of an overall pay program for the city. This is going to impact about 70% of our population that's enrolled in our plan. It will include, Miss Elise, new employees that decide to take our plan for plan year 2020. And so these rates will be established for them as well. 2019, the employee monthly portion of the health plan was 162.62 for plan one, and it was 109 for plan two. We're recommending to move that to 88.50 for plan one and 81.22 for plan two. We also are wanting to make this effective 10-1, which matches our fiscal year calendar versus waiting until our plan year, which is January 1. That gives a little bit more relief to our employees for the fall timeframe and then moves us into plan year 2020. With that said, I also want to revisit our health fund. You know, our goal continues to manage the self-funded plan in a way that balances the city contributions and the employee contributions. We've been able to do that again, I think, this year. We've made some small strides going forward to stability in our plan for 2020. A contributing factor of that is us moving to two high deductible plans last year. Even though it might be small, I think it's allowed us to relook at what that city's contribution is for the total monthly premium. And you see again, that $286 figure there. That's full-time budgeted positions estimated at that amount, and that's the increase to the city's portion of the total monthly premium. We do continue to see high medical claims because medical costs are not decreasing. And, you know, our goal is to continue to strive for that reserve. With what we're proposing, we're still going to project to stay around that three-month reserve mark, which is where we've been last year. Again, staying somewhat stable, not losing ground. But given we're not able to provide a pay program, we thought this was an alternative. But given we're not able to provide a pay program, we thought this was an alternative of what we could do to alleviate some of the cost in our health fund for our employees. I show this chart every year just to give you an idea of where our employee medical claim expenditures are at. Again, it shows that for fiscal year nineteen, we're coming down slightly, which allows for some of that stability, we hope. As well as we want to be accessible in the details of our health fund for our employees and the public, as well as for yourself. This is a comparison that we did last year, sort of giving a visual of what all the revenues are and the expenditures. This has not shifted very much from fiscal year seventeen eighteen. Again, this is showing that we'll have that ending working capital balance of three months in our estimated reserve based on the projections. And this is just a backup of the pie chart you just saw. Again, accessibility and what we're seeing in regards to our revenues coming in for fiscal year eighteen nineteen and our expenditures for this current fiscal year. We did come back, if you recall, last year and offer the health savings account of a thousand dollars for our employees that were enrolled in the city's health plan and had a, and opened a health savings account and was eligible for that. That amount was what was added in there. You see that three-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. That was the employer contribution into HSA's for fiscal year eighteen nineteen. Outside of that, there might be some very subtle number changes, but for the most part, we're still stable at that three-months reserve from where we were last year. So what's being proposed tonight as part of our fiscal year twenty budget is our premium decrease for active employees. What's not changing is our premiums for our retirees under the age of sixty-five. We're keeping our dental premiums the same as they are currently. Our plan design changes are not changing as well. We continue to provide a preventive maintenance drug program, teledoc, and a hundred percent preventive care benefit as a part of our healthcare offerings. We do have a couple of things that we are working toward and continue to work on. We are going back out to do some shopping for a benefit consultant, and so we're working through an RFP process now for that. That'll actually kick off in July in hopes that we might have a new benefit consultant be in place and ready to start for the new plan year. We also need to do continuing education on teledoc. We're getting great response for our employees who are accessing that. It's only forty dollars for a doctor's visit. It's tele, telemedicine, so they can either call in or FaceTime. And those folks that have utilized that just swear by it, love it. But we need to push more utilization on that and get our employee base and, and those family members access to that as well. So we've got some campaigns going on with regards to increasing education and awareness on that. And then our employee health clinic concept, we've talked about this, we're moving forward. We've got a couple of community clinics that we've been in talk with, including the county's clinic. And just seeing what that might look like, what could be offered associated with that, what costs that might consider. We would really like the new benefit consultant to help us design that and look at what that might look like for us. But we're continuing initial discussions anyway with a couple of those community clinics in town where we can maybe lean on and utilize those as our employee clinics. Some additional numbers just for you to take a look at, these are all the tiers. As far as the monthly take-home pay for employee for Plan One, it's gonna be seventy-four dollars and twelve cents for any tier that they have, employee only or the family tiers. It'll be twenty-seven dollars and seventy-eight cents monthly take-home for Plan Two.
As I recall, there was a fairly significant difference between the two plans. But the reduction is not really proportionate. Are the majority of the people in Plan One, is that why the thought was there or?
No, ma'am. The, the thought was to keep it simple to the eighty-five fifteen split on the premium and just keep it simple and keep the, the two plans designed that way similar. We do have the majority of people enrolled in Plan Two versus Plan One. So they're gonna see a smaller take-home amount than our Plan One participants, but it's at eighty-five fifteen to keep it the same for both. Good question. This takes us back to the employee-only high deductible plan, but it also provides you not only with what the employee monthly amounts will be proposed for 2020, but gives you also then the city's contribution and that increase that Gilbert was talking about. Our total premium amount for these plans, we're not suggesting an increase for. We're keeping that flat. We're just shifting some more dollars to the employer's side versus the employee. And there's that eighty-five fifteen, Ms. Scott, versus that seventy-two twenty-eight and eighty-twenty that we had last year. And that brings me to the end of my conversation. Any questions, Mr. Garza?
Yeah, I'm gonna add a couple of points.
Okay.
One, I think it's important that everybody also understand that even though we're suggesting increasing the employer contribution, it by no means does it solve our overall concern with the long-term financial sustainability of our insurance fund. But our intention is to provide some relief to our employees now while we undertake some more, I guess, hopefully, long-term and permanent fixes, if we want to call it that. So I just want to be very clear that everybody understands that this isn't the solution to the issue. It's simply just to, quite frankly, buy us some time to find some of those more long-term solutions. Couple of points too is that there's, well, part of this change too, and it's kind of interesting, is part of the issue that we have is that we lost a lot of employees being enrolled in our insurance when these plans went into effect. And so I think it's important for folks to realize that from a financial standpoint, the fact that we're contributing a little bit more actually helps because it's money that Gilbert can count on getting. Because remember that when we budget, not, the positions aren't filled throughout the whole fiscal year. And so we might be out here, up here talking about, you know, the employee contribution's gonna equate to X throughout next fiscal year, but the reality is that it never does because the positions aren't filled throughout the year. But yet, claims go up every year. For instance, you saw the number of the claims cost. I mean, in a five-year period, our claims cost went up by about a, about a million dollars. But in that same time period, we bought, we have about a hundred less employees that are enrolled in our insurance. So we're covering a hundred less employees but paying more than a million dollars more in claims. So it's going like this. And so that's why it doesn't solve our issue by no means. And Gilbert and I will probably, or Cheryl will, I plan on providing maybe quarterly updates to council as we kind of undertake this RFP process and we start looking at some of these issues. Because I think that when we have these hard conversations during the budget, everybody, including council, staff, et cetera, should be exposed to the facts of the ongoing issues, and so I think it helps to have better discussions, like say, next summer. If we go through a process of updating you where we stand throughout the year, as well as some recommendations on how to address some of those issues, but.
Are there any two-tiered structures for health insurance that has a basic healthcare and then more catastrophic coverage?
No, sir. What we've offered is.
Cover some of those losses?
No, sir. What we've, and we can look into that if that's council's desire, but.
I'm just curious.
What we, we used to have what's called a hospital indemnity plan, but we did away with that several years ago. Now we only have the two high deductible plans that have a difference in the amount of deductible that employer or family meets.
But that's something you could get into with a consultant.
Most definitely, yes.
Cheryl, you said your, your plan, proposed effective date is, is ten-one. Is that the, the start of the plan date?
Not the, it's start of our fiscal year, and so we were gonna be able to come back and give some relief earlier, then waiting until January one, which is technically the start of our plan year.
And we're not, we're not suggesting changing the plans. All we're changing is just where the monies come from for the premium, and so that's why we're able to do it whenever we want, really, quite frankly, as opposed to.
I just want to make sure there wasn't a three-month gap in their deductibles and.
No, sir.
We weren't changing.
No, the plan design, everything works fine, is exactly, exact, exactly, excuse me, like Mr. Garza said, where it's just the shifting of the dollars.
Okay.
Well, I like the concept of taking the burden off the employee to the best that we can.
Yes.
Can I ask a quick question? Does it mean no pay program funding for any department or just?
Are you referring to like a cost of living adjustment?
Yes.
We do not have that built into the budget?
Not this year.
In lieu of that is why we're have this.
That's what I understood.
I think we ran the numbers, and I think on average, the people that would be impacted with increased take-home pay would equate to what?
It's even gonna be a one percent to three percent depending on where they're at currently.
So, so for some employees, those see by default an increase in their take-home pay from somewhere between one and three percent by simply us just lowering their premiums.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding is that there's no pay increase in any of this budget except for this premium?
Not across the board, no.
Okay, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
You've mentioned already the benefit consultant, but I don't know what that buzzword means. Is that a provider that does the, the background work or is that a study that would help us look at our plan?
So that's actually, the RFP is actually gonna be shopping the market for a potential new benefit consultants. Currently, we have Willis Towers Watson that helps us with regards to projections of what our plan should, should look like, or where our premiums should be based on our claims experience, any programs that maybe they can bring to us that we want to take a look at. And so that's the piece of it that we'll be shopping for and looking for a new consultant perhaps to come in and help us with that. And going back to what Mr. Garza said, that's gonna help us really get into and look at maybe some options that we haven't discovered before as a kickoff to that. We currently have Aetna as our network and our claims administrator, and that will not be changing for next year.
That was probably helpful for you to say. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Felicia brought, brought his bodyguards.
I brought a few of them. Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. It's my privilege to be before you, representing the men and women of the Victoria Police Department, to present to you our FY twenty nineteen twenty budget. As you can see, just a couple of photos up there, some of my favorite ones that we've seen throughout the year. But representing the, the men and women, hard-working men and women of the organization. So with that, we'll go ahead and jump right into the presentation. With this, I'll cover briefly just some of the current staffing and service delivery workload. The proposed budget, which includes police operations and also emergency communications, telecommunications, and then talk a little bit real briefly about some future budget issues, which won't be a surprise to you. As far as staffing goes, authorized budgeted strength as of the eleventh of June. We're budgeted for a hundred and twenty-six licensed police officers and thirty-eight civilian personnel, non-licensed personnel, total authorized strength of a hundred and sixty-four. Right now, as we stand today, entry-level police officer openings says eleven. It's actually after the smoke clears this week, our first part next week will be ten. And then civilian positions, again, it says seven, but again, we're in a process of a couple of job offers that'll bring that down to five. So ten and five are more of a true reflection on a go-forward basis. And last year, in case you're wondering, last year when I presented this to you, we were at three police officer vacancies. Just a little bit about calls for service. I bring this back to you all the time just to kind of give you a, you know, a snapshot of where we stand in terms of workload. Twenty seventeen numbers are up there, twenty eighteen ninety-five thousand two hundred and seventy-six. And then nineteen, as of May thirty-first, is forty thousand five hundred and thirty-three. But we do project twenty nineteen to be about ninety-seven thousand call, overall calls for service. And calls for service, these are not incoming calls into the communication center, but they also represent all calls where we dispatch personnel or we, our officers go out on an investigation related to a call, that kind of, so that, that number is captured there. Another benchmark that, that I've mentioned to you in the past in terms of what's very important is emergency response time to nine-one-one calls. And that is, you know, when the citizens pick up the phone and dial nine-one-one, what's it taken to get, you know, a response? These are average call times. So you see in twenty seventeen, six point six, twenty eighteen went down to six point three, and then twenty nineteen, five point eight. We did some, some workload analysis during the year, optimizing some lean Six Sigma work processing. And we found out that some of the problems that we're in the, on the communications in in terms of calls holding. And so that's helped us eliminate some of that waste, and we're down to that five point eight time right now.
That, that's impressive. Thank you.
As far as the police department budget goes, twenty eighteen nineteen personnel line item, twelve point two. We're recommending a budget that's at twelve point one, so a decrease of a hundred and five. M and O, two point six in twenty eighteen nineteen, we're recommending a two point five, decrease of seventy-five thousand. Capital improvements, one hundred and fifty-nine in twenty eighteen nineteen. In twenty nineteen and twenty, we are recommending a one hundred and forty-five thousand, which is a decrease of fourteen. Total reoccurring expenses, fifteen million for twenty eighteen nineteen. And for twenty nineteen twenty, we're at fourteen point eight, a decrease of a hundred and ninety-five. One-time expenses, six hundred and ninety-three in twenty eighteen nineteen. And now we're recommending a budget that has eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, an increase of two hundred and three thousand. Total budget last year, current year, fifteen point seven. We're recommending a budget that's pretty flat, fifteen point seven, only an increase of seventy-two hundred dollars. So as far as the personnel line item goes, all we're proposing is that within the existing one hundred and twenty-six budgeted staffing positions that we have, that we reorganize one of those senior officer positions to sergeant. As we grow, we often think in terms of boots on the ground and police officers, but another really important part of that is supervision. So with eleven, ten, eleven vacancies, I didn't believe it was financially prudent to recommend additional police officers at this time. Although you know that I'm always going to be one that's gonna come here and ask for them. I just didn't believe in this particular budget that that would be sound, given the fact that I'm ten, eleven over, excuse me, behind. So, but I would like to, the approval to reorganize one of the senior officer positions to make it a sergeant, help patrol officers in the field. And then you see there's some budgetary payroll. I call those Gilbert-type numbers. The longevity certificate, TMRS, healthcare, and he already explained a lot of that, but that was a decrease of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. So that's our personnel line item. On the maintenance and operations side, we saw a decrease of seventy-five thousand. Again, you heard earlier, sixty-three thousand decrease in the county jail contract and a twelve thousand dollar decrease in various software maintenance. On the capital side, a decrease of fourteen thousand mainly due to the increase in computer replacement, SWAT and other equipment, but a decrease in software machinery and equipment. The net decrease to reoccurring expenses was a hundred and ninety-five thousand.
Chief, is that decrease in the county jail contract based on less usage? Or is it an actually reduced in a negotiated contract amount?
Less usage. One-time expenses for our budget in FY twenty eighteen nineteen, six ninety-three. We're proposing a budget with eight ninety-six, so the variance of two hundred and three thousand. And then there's a couple of drivers of, of some of these different, priority medical dispatch for, for fire department. Because we really like the fire department. And then, so our second and final Motorola payment out of capital. And then car camera replacement, which is moving all of our existing, all of our platforms, all of our equipment that records to one platform, that being Axon, so it'll be a lot more efficient having everything go into one place. AVL and then other capital equipment increased to two hundred and forty-eight thousand. Machinery, another capital.
You explain the AVL?
AVL is Automated Vehicle Locator, location, and it's software that resides in communications and allows communications dispatcher to actually look up at a, a map and see where patrol, police officer assets are. It follows the, the unit around, and we can use that information to give a recommendation to CAD that says, hey, when there's a call, look for the closest unit in AVL first before you send it to the Zone Four Hundred, for example. So if we happen to have a unit that's just around the corner, may or may not be aware, should be aware that that call's going on, but CAD will pick up on it if we do this correctly, and it'll spot the closest unit, and it'll send them instead. And it'll still probably send the other unit, but it'll send the closest unit. So. So we see two things. We see increased efficiency on the part of dispatch, and we see a tool that's going to be used very, it's going to be used as an officer safety tool. We'll also be able to see where our officers are. There's been cases in other agencies where officers have been involved in traffic collisions, say for example, and they don't know where they are. They just know that they're, you know, somewhere in the city, and no one knows. It's 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning. This one case, it was 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, it was heavy fog, and the officer got involved in an accident, no one knew where that person was. Having AVL will allow us to know exactly where that unit is at all times. So, and we could also use, in addition to the GPS component, we can also use it as a data component where we can actually see how fast the car was going, where it was during various times, and we can go back depending on, you know, a period of time to be able to see where that car has went throughout the city. So in my opinion, very good technology and something that we should be taking total advantage of right now.
Is this imagery only at the dispatch?
As of right now, it is.
You don't see the in-the-car type?
Right now, right now, it's just in dispatch. Although what we expect that we would do is, it does include a component, a GPS component in the car, but we would also be looking eventually to see how we could roll that out so it could be available to sergeants and to other officers on a mapped screen display in MDT.
That would be good.
And as far as, I think it's important for me, and I would expect that you would expect me to come to you and let you know that what I'm still seeing, and although, you know, council's been very supportive in our request staffing and equipment in the past, I just believe it's important to continue to let you know that because we are shorter in staffing than we probably should be, it is affecting some of the service delivery. Workload demands require additional staffing. I threw this back in there because it seems like it's a long time ago, but it's still, it's still true today. ICMA came in and did a study in 2013 and recommended at that time that we'd be at 126. Council at that time said that we were going to have a slow growth of getting to that 126. We are there now. But if you look at the workload metrics and a variety of staffing models that include a whole lot of statistical information that sometimes I don't even understand, but those models indicate that based on our workload, we're still at probably somewhere in the 145 range as far as what we need based on staffing and population as far as the organization goes. And my last one is just an update. You had this at the CIP, but just an update on the Police and Fire Administration. Public Safety Building Campus, the space needs assessment was conducted. Public Safety Building Campus land was identified and purchased. And then you heard the other night where Phase 1 firearms range is listed as other needs on the 2019 CIP presentation, 2019-20 CIP presentation.
Was that project was 6 million?
Nine, nine total.
Just the firearm?
Yes, but that included roads to get there and the building itself, and everything was upwards of nine. And that concludes my presentation, I'm ready.
What's your prognosis in filling those empty slots? I mean, are you optimistic about it, or?
I'm optimistic. I, we're in a situation where we are not alone in this. I have a lot of communications with my colleagues throughout the state, and we're all fighting for that, you know, that most qualified candidate, and so things are heating up again. We typically see throughout the year, you know, we, our attrition rate, and Cheryl may have better numbers, but it's usually around six, you know, where we see, you know, lose a year. I think we're a little higher right now. I attribute that again to just heavy competition in the workforce. So I'm always optimistic, and I've seen those numbers go down. And last year, when I was presenting to you, it was three. So, you know, I was very happy in requesting more. But that's, yeah, so I am optimistic just because I have confidence that we can continue to work in the right direction to fill those vacancies.
Chief, if we're looking at the licensed personnel, and they were short 10 right now.
Yes.
And the workload metric says that we should have 145, then we're short again about 29?
Yes, what that study said was, it said that you needed 10 now based on the workload. We adopted a plan, 10 growth over a five-year period.
Oh, okay.
It just wasn't, we were mindful of obviously the budget restraints of the city at that time and still. And so we ended up, City Council ended up approving, you know, a slow-growth plan to get us to where, we're now at that 126. But if you look at those metrics, those work studies, and we re, we even re-engineered, excuse me, the last study, and we came up pretty close to the 142, 143 range. But that's kind of where we stand right now, based on workload alone.
Okay, thank you.
More questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, sorry, just real quick, I'm not sure if it's put in for you to introduce your staff that's here.
I have Deputy Chief Jamison behind me. I have Captain Sanderson, Captain Caleb Rashiers, and Captain Elaine Moya here to watch and see how the budget presentation goes and experience, and my backup. Along with, I really don't need any more backup after Officer Chris Carter over here. Chris, why don't you go ahead and stand up for a second? See what I mean? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Garza, it gives me great pleasure to present the Victoria Fire Department's fiscal year 20 budget. And before I forget, just want to thank Chief Craig for that dispatch software. He's always looking out for the fire department, so we appreciate that. Go ahead and jump right in. For the new members on council, just kind of want to reiterate kind of what the Victoria Fire Department does. Victoria Fire Department is an all-hazards department, which means we provide fire EMS, hazmat rescue, and everything in between for the whole 890 square miles of Victoria County. We also, within the city limits, we provide a fire marshal service, which includes plans review, fire investigation, public safety education, building inspections, fire code ordinances, you name it. Fire marshal's office is a busy group, and we do that all out of six fire stations strategically placed throughout the city. And I'll follow Chief Craig's lead there. I'll introduce some of our staff, and Chief Martin is in charge of Operations Division. He's right back here. Chief Legler, which is our fire marshal, and these guys put together, they helped put together this budget, so they're here to back me up. And if I say something wrong, they can correct me real quick. Chief Belt's out on a vacation with Boy Scouts. Before we jump into the numbers, want to talk real big about, we like to be strategic at the fire department and set goals and objectives, and this will kind of give you an idea of what our budget's based around. First and foremost is our cancer prevention initiative that we started in 2018. And that entails a couple of things. One, enhance medical screening for fiscal year 20. And basically what we're trying to do there is improve our physicals so we can detect cancer at a much quicker and earlier rate. Hopefully, one, save lives, and two, drive down any kind of medical costs associated with that. The other piece of that is a prevention piece as well, which is buying additional sets of PPE, personal protective gear for each firefighter. And that's going to be a multi-year program to get that pulled off. But that's a very important piece and which is becoming standard within the industry. And basically allows us to decontaminate their gear before they have to use it again, which is what we found out recently is what's causing that cancer, is that contamination spread from the gear. The other key, one of the other key goals and objectives for our fiscal year 20 budget is our ISO rating evaluation. And basically what that is, is we want to make sure we maintain an ISO class of 2, which is a great, great rating, which results in lower insurance premiums and so on and so forth, recruiting of industry, the best is a one, so we're right there. And what we do every 10 years or so is we have a consultant come in who evaluates the city and helps us plan for that ISO evaluation that comes in usually a year after or whatnot. Gives us some time to adjust if we need to. And lastly, one of our big projects, and Gilbert's kind of already mentioned that, is our Station 1 hardening and remodel project, which is a mitigation project. We kind of identified it after Hurricane Harvey. And basically, I'll talk a little bit about that project. So as we go through, you'll understand what we're wanting to do. That station was built in the early 80s and has taken a couple hurricanes and some tropical storms over the, over the years, and it has lived its service life and in desperate need of a remodel and in desperate need of hardening to hurricane standards. Because just like during Hurricane Harvey, we had to evacuate that building because we just weren't confident in its ability to withstand that storm. So this project would harden that facility to where we could occupy that building, stay in it just as we do our new stations, up to a certain wind rating of 135 miles an hour, which is pretty darn high. It'll also restructure the station to make it a modern fire station to operate like our other ones and give it another good 30 to 40 years of service life. It's in a perfect location so we can respond anywhere in the community from that location in a timely manner. So that's our big project with Station 1, is basically hardening it to hurricane strength, redesigning the inside, and also adding a storage component, warehousing facility on the property. Just a quick macro look at our, at our overall budget. Fire department budget is right at 14.5 million proposed for fiscal year 20. Our personnel costs make up of about 11 million, maintenance operation about 2.2, and our capital is right at 1.35. And as Mr. Raina kind of mentioned in his presentation, our revenue is roughly about 4.5 million with about approximately 2 million from our EMS billing, another 2 million roughly from the county emergency services contract. And then, as he mentioned, every year or the past few years, we were receiving approximately 500,000 from the ambulance supplemental payment program, which is a reimbursement for uncompensated unfunded care on the EMS side. Dive into the numbers a little bit. Here's kind of a year-over-year comparison for our budgets. Kind of as Chief mentioned earlier, you know, the pay and benefits, those are Gilbert numbers. Those are some structural changes and things in our organization. We've had some retirements and some regrading of some positions to help reduce those pay and benefit costs. Our maintenance and operation account, down 92,000. Capital's up significantly, but a large portion of that is that Station 1 project in the capital account. Our total budget overall, 5% increase with the majority of that cost being that Station 1 project. If you take out those one-time expenses, we're actually right at a flat budget with a flat reoccurring budget, right at 13.1 million.
Chief, where is Station 1?
Station 1 is right here off Goodwin and Navarro, roughly. Our one-time expenses, as we talked about Station 1, there's a couple other building improvement projects we have in there for other facilities. We have six stations, a drill field, fire administration building, another station that we use as a gymnasium and things like that. So we have some other building improvement projects. But the bulk of that building improvement is our Station 1 remodeling and hardening for the storm readiness. As Chief Craig mentioned, the Motorola radio upgrade project, year two of two, that's our last payment on that. We discussed the ISO consultation fee and evaluation. That's actually in our maintenance and operation budget, but we listed here as our one-time expenses. And then various fire EMS and IT equipment. You can see there, that kind of makes up our one-time expenses. In our maintenance and operation account, kind of where some of the variances are, our cancer prevention initiative, that is in a tune of an increase of about $50,000 to enhance physicals and to enhance or provide additional PPE over our general spending that we have in previous years. So a bulk of our maintenance and operation increase is right there in that cancer prevention initiative. Our ISO consultant fee is in there, obviously 40, $50,000. Medical supplies went up about 3,000, was just, as Ms. Marshall-Johnny said, healthcare is expensive. We provide healthcare, and we have to buy those supplies and things like that. And that's just a standard rate of inflation cost on our medicals. And we also added, to help with our retention of folks and training of personnel, we added an additional paramedic training program, which was an increase of about $4,000 from the previous year.
Can you talk about where you are with vacancies in your department?
Yes, good question. We are currently, I believe, had two turn in this morning. So we are right at six vacancies. We've had anywhere from nine to 10 vacancies since October of last year. We just, about two weeks ago, were almost there, and then we had another run of resignations in the past two or three weeks. So we're back up to about six vacancies of certified personnel.
Out of how many?
Out of 130. Excuse me, 120 certified, 127. Some of our key capital expenditures, these will look very similar to our one-time expenses because most of these are building improvements, obviously, the Station 1 project, Motorola upgrade, the IT hardware and software, and then obviously enhanced fire and EMS equipment. And that enhanced fire and EMS equipment includes our SWAT medic deployment equipment. So we're starting that program with PD. Hopefully this October, we'll be ready to go 100%. That's a big bulk of that enhanced fire and EMS equipment.
You're doing it yourself, right?
Myself personally?
Yeah.
Yes, sir, yes, sure, first one out the door. Me and Chief Craig, he's going first, I'm right behind him. If you look at our year-by-year comparison, less than one-time expenses, our capital is down significantly. Once again, that huge project, Station 1 project, impacts that significantly. But also, would be remiss if I didn't mention Mr. Raina and his staff, I see Billy back here. They do a great job with the ambulance supplemental payment program. So for the past two years, we've hadn't had to spend much money out of the general fund for a fire truck, correct me if I'm wrong here. So we've been fortunate, we've been able to buy our past two fire apparatus with that ambulance supplemental payment program. Just in summary, I kind of look at our total budget. Like I said, if you look overall, it's up 5%. Take out the one-time expenses, we're actually really, really flat. And as kind of Mr. Raina mentioned in his presentation, that Fire Station 1 project almost completely will be paid for by revenue from the ambulance supplemental payment program. That's, he put it in the general fund this year, but that money is truly coming from ambulance supplemental payment program, almost a whole complete, complete job. And just some future budget considerations and challenges, just sort of be thinking of those things as we look forward. Like I said, we like to be very strategic. After fiscal year 20, we have some pretty expensive capital replacements that are kind of our focus. Heart monitors, which are cardiac monitors, those are a very expensive piece of medical equipment that'll need to be replaced in 2021. Our SCBA's, which are a very important component of our firefighting ability, that's a three-to-four-year program, and you're looking at 300,000 a year for those to get all those air packs upgraded and up to date and in compliance with the federal government.
Do y'all pursue grants for some of this?
We do, and we will pursue grants for every one of these items. Well, also, if the ambulance supplemental payment program continues, kind of as Mr. Raina said, we just don't know when that will stop and how much that funding will be, so we try not to count on it. But our goal is to use that, hopefully, 400, 500,000 dollars a year to buy some of these significant capital items. As you see, we have fire trucks in there, they're up around 700,000 dollars and so on. You can kind of see through 2023 what we have kind of on the forefront of our capital replacement schedule. And absolutely, we'll look at grants at any opportunity for these pieces of equipment.
How long do these pieces of equipment, how long are they expected to last?
The air packs, they're a 10-year kind of service life. The heart monitors say eight, that's what the manufacturer says. We have stretched ours out into 10 years. The CPR devices are new, and we're stretching those out into 10 years.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And the fire truck?
A fire truck, we frontline service those 10 years and then four years in reserve, roughly, kind of estimate. But predominantly, they serve 10 years frontline. And, you know, Mr. Raina brought up the lease program. Leasing is becoming more and more popular on the fire apparatus side as well, just for the same reasons he mentioned on the, on the other standard vehicle. on the, on the other standard vehicle side. Little bit different program, little different length in time and different standards. But becoming a very, very popular program because these trucks are almost a million dollars to lease those apparatus. So that's something that we'll look at and continue to look at as we move forward in the budgeting process. That is it for our presentation. Be happy to answer any questions if you have any. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the benefit of council, we have on the schedule two more departments to go today. So the Parks Department and the Library, and then that would conclude today.
Mayor Councilmember, Ms. Garza, thank you for allowing me today. Today, I'm gonna go through three different budgets, the Parks and Rec budget, Community Center, and the Golf Course budget. And so please feel free to stop me at any point. This will be high level, and if you have any questions, I'll dive deeper, be glad to dive deeper into those. Overall, in the Parks and Rec, we have thirty-six full-time employees. The Community Center has seven full-time employees, and the Golf Course has ten. If you look over at the budget, are the differences between the two thousand eighteen and nineteen versus two thousand twenty? Two thousand nineteen's in the left-hand column, two thousand twenty is in the right-handed column. Our personnel cost is going down by about ten thousand dollars. Our maintenance operation is going up a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Our capital is going down three hundred and sixty thousand. Our total budget is going down two hundred and two thousand. And if you look at the, minus the one-time expenses, so reoccurring budget across both, both years, we're going up thirty-seven thousand dollars. And I'll get into some of those numbers here for you. Okay, so the difference in the, the personnel costs, you've got about nine, ten thousand dollars due to payroll and baseline adjustments. Operations, like I said, is going to go up one seventy, and those increases are there underneath. Botanical and Ag, we are doing a sprawl, a fall chemical application for the parks, for the entire parks, our sixteen parks that we have, so that we can start getting a better turf quality. We will pre-emerge those, and so that hopefully that will increase our speed, that'll increase the amount of mowings that we have, and increase the aesthetics of the facilities. We are also starting a youth sports complex turf fertilization plan. If, if some of y'all have been out to the Riverside Stadium, you can see the turf differences there. We're bringing, bringing that plan onboard to the youth sports complex as well to increase the, make the grass look nicer and, and give it more health as going forward. Recreation is, is going up. We are, we are adding some additional recreation programs, adult football, flag football, adult soccer. And then Christmas on the Square is not a new program for us, but last year it was not budgeted for us to run. We took that over, and so now this year it has those numbers in there. Last year's was, we ran it, but we didn't budget that because Main Street was doing it, and then we took it over during the budget year. Professional Services, as y'all may know, Trinity Field has come onboard with us, and so that's a contract for it to be mowed and taken care of. And then we are putting in an annual service agreement for our splash pads for the UV system. That way, we don't have to go back and, and when one of them's go out, it's a large, large sum of money at the time. And this will be for us to, to keep a yearly maintenance program on it, so we don't have that, that problem. And if you look at our capital, it's going down. And my, most of the time, my capital fluctuates depending on if it's, if it's when we're buying mowers or not. And this year, you know, last year, we bought a couple larger area mowers, and that's where you're seeing some of those decreases in, in that, that cost there. Is there any question on the parks? I'm gonna move into, this thing will work. Some of the projects that we've got, DeLeon.
I had one question for you.
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Jim, I've been coughing a lot. Do you have a pruning program for like our trees in the downtown area?
We have, no, sir, we do not. We, we, right now, we react to those. We don't, we don't have a, a specific plan that goes out now. I know that, that some of the.
For those trees to grow up to a taller canopy.
Yes, sir. And that's some of the, that's some of the stuff that we are working through as far as getting those programs together. But right now, it is, it is more of a as-need basis.
And so you'll just do it in-house when you can?
Depending, yes, sir. Sometimes that. And then if we, if we feel we need to, like at, at City Hall, if we, if our, our people can't get to it, then we may, we may contract that out to one of the local landscaping companies. We do that with DeLeon Plaza. We do that with, with here. Some of our trees, we do know that those are on, but like Riverside and stuff, that's something that we need to start working for, forward.
I wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
Well, it's just a practical thing. You, you, you know, if they get a higher canopy, then there's less, like, there's one down at one of the stoplights. When you walk across, you can't see the, the, the light. It lets the pedestrian know you're going because the canopy's too low. But it's not a big deal, is, is if you get used to it and get it into the regular thing, you ought to be able to take care of it.
You are correct. But we don't not currently have a, a sustained program for that.
My question was on the signage coming into Victoria. I mean, when we did the one for the DeLeon coming in on the river.
Yes, ma'am.
There was supposed to be some sort of flowers or something to make it more attractive. I know y'all put the lights up. But is there something that you could plant out there to make some of the signage a little bit more attractive?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, we can look into it.
But it would be in the Parks and Recreation budget?
Yes, for now. One of the things that I'll talk about on July second is about us improving our community appearance.
Okay.
Aspect to be more proactive, and so we can have that conversation.
Okay. Well, I was just wanting to make sure with which department I would ask for.
Sure.
Okay, that's fine. So.
And if I can state, Chief Fox can verify, it's also extremely important to keep the, the trees pruned back because of the fire trucks that they need to go through there, especially the downtown area. So keeping these trees pruned.
They can cut them themselves, driving through really slow on the, on the top of the fire trucks.
Don't y'all have chainsaws?
They've got the ladder, they've got a ladder truck too.
They have chainsaws on every truck. Sorry, I brought it up, Tracy. Okay, well, proceed.
Some of the, the capital and projects that we have going on, we're replacing the grass at DeLeon Plaza. We're going to more of a, a hardy grass that will handle the amount of traffic that we are putting on it. The, the St. Augustine that is out there will, is not meant for the amount of people and the amount of programs that are going on. So we're gonna pull that out, we'll, we'll replace it, fix the irrigation system, make sure it works. And so we believe that will be a better turf that will last longer for us and will not so, show so much signs of damage when we have a boot fest or when we have another large event out there that won't damage that grass. We're also looking at for our cemetery, a mapping program right now for our cemeteries. We have maps that were given to us twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago. We're not sure, part of them were in somebody's head. They tried to lay them out, but this is gonna bring a company in that will lay that out for us. So it'll put it on a computer program for us that we can go and, and help our citizens whenever they're wanting to find a grave, be more of a quicker service, and it gives us the ability to know what we're, where people are located at. Also, in the parks, you have their control post. If y'all know that in, in, that's in year four of eight. We are proposing athletic level, field leveling, that will be at the youth sports complex to level those. And that's just a routine maintenance that we ought to do every four or five years. We also are including money in there for a duck pond design. I do not know exactly where that's gonna cost, but that's where we're going. We know that that, that project is going to be more than what we originally had. And so we're going to include some design work in that so that we, hopefully, we are presenting what our, our fixes for that will be shortly. And so I wanted to include money in there just in case when we need to get started on those design, that design work.
And we will.
Oh, yes, sir.
Will we be consulting with the ducks to find out what kind of pond they want?
Actually, the ducks are loving it.
Yes, Donald, actually.
From a capital standpoint, have we looked at naming rights with our community partners?
I'm not sure if.
No, sir, we have not.
The city's ever looked at that?
No, sir.
Something to think about.
Sure.
There has been some of that, I think, not a whole lot, but I agree, it is something to look at more actively.
Other items, if you'll remember, we got a grant just after the hurricane to provide us with GPS vector control units. We, we normally use eight in our city. That was, that grant gave us five, and so we're wanting to put, to get three additional. That way, when we go out, we've had that coverage and we, we're all, all of our units are GPS located. And that way, we can, we can institute this program for our citizens to know where we're doing, our efficiencies. And we're hoping that that will bring a mapping element to it so that when we do go out and spray for mosquitoes, that the citizens can follow us along the line to see where it has been sprayed and where it has not. And a couple other, just in, tractors and equipment, infield groomer, and then our normal picnic tables, barbecue pits, and trash cans. Okay, the community center-wise, you're, you're looking at a increase in, for personnel, in thirty thousand dollars. The maintenance and operations is an increase in twenty, and the capital is an increase in one forty. And I'm gonna, I went through those real fast because I'm gonna dive into where they're coming from in the next slide. Temporary payroll, or increases. This, our staff that is out at the community center, and I, and I mean by our, our regular workers that are there that, that set up events and, and go there, are the, the lowest-paid employee that, that is in the city as far as starting out. Last year, we went, we took our Parks Department, and we went from hiring in at ten dollars an hour, we were jumped up to where we were hiring at eleven dollars an hour. And we're proposing to do the same thing for the community center employees there. We're gonna add an additional part-time position. That was due. We were using a temporary labor service so much that we felt that this, now we can, we can hire this person at, at the hours that we need for less than what we can pay a contractor like a labor max or a labor ready to, to come in and, and help us during times that we need them. And then we have, of course, insurance charge and premium payroll. The operations, the increase in there, one of the things that we wanted to do is to have a landscaping contract with a, a company to come in and be able to maintain that on, on a consistent basis for us. It also, it'll improve the aesthetics of the community center, but also help the Parks Department get quicker in that because the Parks Department was going over to the community center to do that service.
I have a request on that.
Sure.
Can you make sure it doesn't stink? You know, you walk into the community center, you got that awful smell there. I don't know what it's from.
I, I think that may be where, where you look at the capital in there, the, the front, the lobby roof right there leaks. And so that's a, that's a repair that we're, we're looking at in council, and I hope that would help that, what you're talking about there, Ms. Leece.
Okay.
The chairs and the barricades, that was a program that we started, I believe, last year where we're, instead of making one lump sum charge purchase, we're doing sixty at a time, and then we will continue to rotate those and put those on a program, kind of like our, our control post in the park, where we're doing those in little increments, not as one big lump sum payment each three or four years. Any questions on the community center?
What's the projector replacement project?
That, for the, for the dome and the annex, the, the projectors that go up that are available for us when we, when it's a rental or whatnot, they're, they're replacements of those two items.
Just the projector?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay, when I talk about golf course, I wanna, I wanna start by saying that the golf course is, is a year and a half into it. And, and so this went, this year so far has been tough. We've had a lot of rain and a lot of different things going on. And so when, when we built the budget, we built our, our revenues based on what we believe that we're gonna to make right now. Not, not that, okay, we're not gonna have, we're not forecasting that next year, we're gonna have perfect weather for the entire year. We're building those revenues based on what we're seeing right now. But in turn, as we're building our, our expenditures, I want to make sure that I, I budget the expenditures of what the golf course needs. And so, and then as those numbers come in on a, on a monthly basis, we will look to see, okay, do we need to, to lower our expenditures, expenditures to match what our revenues are, are coming in at? Does that? Understand where I'm going with that one? And that's what I'll show you on here. Gilbert, feel free to jump in on with me if I, if I miss on this one. So our golf sales, we're looking at pretty, if you see across the board here, this is our, our revenue. We're staying very flat. For the most part, a few adjustments to, to where we believe that we can make a little bit more money in some of the smaller areas, but not a, a huge jump in those, in those projected revenues.
Can you go back?
Yes, sir.
So when he was talking about managing his budget, you could, unless you were gonna talk about it the next slide.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
But there you'll notice the difference between the projections, and so he would just manage his budget.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, this one probably shows it better than.
Yeah, and I'm gonna let Gilbert come up because he explains this a lot better than I do.
Are they Gilbert numbers?
Everything is Gilbert number. Basically, Kobe's trying to say, I got your name right. What I'm trying to say is that he's, we're assuming extra level of revenue. And throughout the course of the year, he's gonna adapt and adjust to see how the revenue's coming in. In the prior years, we tried to budget a set revenue based on some assumptions on, on play. And as you well know, the past year and a half has not played out. So this year, I'm playing out the revenues as with the actual factors. Now, for once, this is the first year we're gonna have some concrete data on actual plays. So they probably hopefully be conservative because as a result of weather. As the weather gets a better results on it, you're gonna see a more increase in revenue. But his expenses should stay the same. The only time it will fluctuate if, on a monthly or quarterly basis, when I report back to him on a financial status, we need to adjust some of the expenses to make sure we meet our revenues. That's all.
On this budget right here, where's the, we're just eating away at our working capital.
That's absolutely correct.
So we can't get to where the golf course breaks even?
You, I mean, technically, you could if you cut stuff.
But we're playing out one a year, see how that weather plays out. If not, we can come back, and we're gonna propose a rate adjustment as well. So it's like, we got a year, a full year under our belt. It just happens that we had some bad weather at the same time, which resulted in our play being down. I'm just asking, let's find out how we go this year. If not, you can see the numbers, something has to give. And the revenue side has to be, right now, we're contemplating adjusting somewhere down the road. Maybe we'll look at the beer sales, maybe adapt the quarter here and there. We're looking at golf places too as well that maybe we need to adjust it. But we don't want to just throw that to right now. We want to see how this weather plays out. But for sure, logically, I can't, you can see the numbers yourself, something has to give, and we won't have to come back. If that can trend continues, yes, to answer your question, because yes, you're eating down your working capital. And that's the last thing we want to do.
And I, and I, you know, for context, I suppose, I mean, I could tell you that this actually, our golf course here is actually in great shape compared to municipally-owned golf courses all across the country and the state. I mean, typically, municipally-owned golf courses are heavily subsidized by communities. I could tell you, even the city of San Antonio, which you would think, you know, seventh largest city in the country, was heavily subsidized, but they got rid of them. Kings was municipally-owned golf course subsidized almost fifty percent from the general fund. Municipally-owned golf courses are not typically revenue generating entities. A lot of entities keep golf courses because it's a quality of life issue, and just how we invest in ball fields and other things, people view golf courses the same. So at least from my standpoint, even though it's a little in the red, I mean, compared to what is common with municipally-owned golf courses, we're doing pretty good.
And Mr. Bocknight, one of the things that we, that we, that we were looking at, you know, we just opened up the range. We have no real data as far as what that's going to bring in, as far as revenue would go. And, and so some of those things, I wanted to, if we don't see that trend up, I can bring those numbers down. But I didn't want our, our green superintendent to not be able to do what he needed to do for the health of the course. If I need to adjust slowly, I can. I just didn't want to go forward handicapping him to that nature.
Does your budget here include any revenue in there from the range?
It's got some. It sure does. But it, we don't know, it's, that's, it's just, it's a, it's a projection by us. And so we're not exactly sure how that's gonna play out. Now, we've ran that based on a certain dollar figure per golfer that we figure that we can spend. And so if you remember back to our, our master, our business plan where we, we were hoping to get thirty-one dollars per play, we've adjusted that to, to get per person that comes in the door, we're figuring X amount of dollars on the, the range balls. But we've got to see that play out to really know. And so I wasn't counting on a tremendous amount of revenue, but it may generate some more than what we're thinking.
Where does the marketing of the golf course fall into anywhere in our budgets?
That's a great question. We actually. That's a great question, we actually talked about that, quite frankly, the golf course is not staffed to be proactive, it's that, like, a lot of operations in the city, and I'll talk about that on July 2nd, but this is no different, they're not staffed to be proactive, they're staffed to be reactive, we considered adding another position here to focus on getting more tournaments and advertising and things of that sort, but because we just took over the golf course not too long ago, we want to kind of give it another year to kind of see where we are before we sort of commit to having another recurring expense to it. So, other than what staff does, I don't know if you want to speak to that, but it's not a lot.
No, sir, it's not, I mean, we have, of course, Facebook and that stuff, but our golf pro is tied to the office tremendously right now, instead of being out, going after and getting those tournaments and that kind of stuff, and that's where Mr. Garza was talking about the additional staff.
Well, we don't want it to be Victoria's best kept secret.
You are correct.
We need to get people here to play, because, like you say, when they come and see that course, golfers like good courses, and you can attract more.
And I do plan on talking some about just our communications operations when I talk about staffing on July 2nd, and so we could take a deeper dive into that at that time, because that's a concern citywide, not just with the golf course.
In the advertising that we do with Hotel Motel money, is the golf course mentioned?
It should, yeah, I've seen it, yeah, absolutely, it's a destination golf course, for sure.
I would just like to say, I've had the opportunity to visit two of the venues you take care of, Riverside Park, and again, Friday at the softball tournament, and those facilities look immaculate, thank you very much.
I appreciate that, we feel we can do better. We can keep going on it, but I do want to let you know, that tournament was one of our largest as far as hotels, we got those numbers back today, and we were at 739 hotel rooms for the weekend, it was a great event.
And when you drive from Dallas, all the way from Dallas with your eight-year-old to play a tournament, there's something here to see.
And we had a team from Moore Oklahoma, yeah, we had a team from Moore, Oklahoma come in as well.
Yep. Unbelievable, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bachnight, I forgot to tell you one thing, when those numbers were done, that's back at the end of May, in June, I had a lower play, and I'm looking at the numbers, it's higher than I thought, so I'm not surprised by the end of the year, we might be just okay, but I'm just taking the high.
All right, one more, everybody.
All right. Good evening, council. This evening, I'm going to provide a brief overview of library services and the proposed library budget for 1920.
2020?
2019 to 2020.
Sorry.
So, just a high view on this, the library is open six days a week for 61 hours per week, we have 27 full-time employees, five part-time employees, approximately 3,800 people visit our building weekly, and we receive about 1,350 hits weekly on our website. 6,700 items are checked out weekly, with 93% of those being physical items that are checked out, and 7% digital materials. Over the last five years, we've seen a significant increase in our program event attendance. In 2014, as you can see on this slide, our annual attendance was 16,899, and in 2018, it was 22,359, which is a 32% increase in attendance at library programs, and I feel like this has occurred for a couple of reasons. First, this has been a stronger focus for us based upon feedback from our strategic planning meetings and our community conversations. We have purposefully focused staff time and resources on program development, and secondly, the role of libraries has changed. We are no longer just solely a book-focused institution, but more of a community gathering and collaborative working and learning space. We've also had always, over the 10 years that I've been the director, a strong focus on preschool and early elementary programs, and those have been really successful for us. This last fall, we started our adult programs, and those have really begun to take off. We kicked off our adult program, adult reading program on June 1st this year, and we had a mystery night after the library closed, and it was a ticketed event, we filled all of our slots with almost 40 adults participating. It was participatory, it was interactive, it was an evening which focused on teams of adults working together to solve a fictitious mystery by interviewing character actors and looking for clues in the library, and I offer that as an example of the community gathering and community building roles that libraries now play. Just to give those new council members an overview of our priorities and partners, our strategic plan identifies four priorities, they are early literacy, lifelong learning, creating and sharing content, and access to popular materials. We have specific statistics that we track for each goal, and I do provide an in-depth overview each year to council, usually at a meeting in early spring. This annual report is also posted for our community on our website, so if you wanted to see that, you can access that through our website. We, of course, cannot achieve all this without our partners in the community, I've listed a few of those partners on this slide, but there are many more. Father's Day weekend, we just hosted our, I think, our third annual Maker Fest, and we had 450 people attend that event, we had great community support, City of Victoria's support, and once again, it was a community event focused on individuals and agencies sharing their gifts and knowledge in a collaborative environment. Moving on to budget. The broad overview of our budget for 2019-2020 compared to the current budget year shows a 26,000 approximate decrease in personnel, $41,000 increase in maintenance and operations, and 184,700 increase in capital. Total proposed budget for fiscal year 1920 is 2.4 million with 246,500 in one-time expenses, and the remainder is recurring expenses at 2.19 million, which is a $16,092 increase over recurring expenses as compared to last year. The following few slides, I'm just going to go into more detail on the specifics of each budget area. This one shows personnel, the proposed budget reflects a 27,048 decrease in recurring payroll, insurance, and retirement, and a $528 increase in longevity pay for an overall decrease in personnel of 26,520. In maintenance and operations, the proposed budget has an overall increase of 41,112. Increase in professional services occurred mainly due to movement of monies from building maintenance and bookbinding maintenance, money was also added to professional services to upgrade our front entrance doors, ADA doors, and the lease program increased to cover costs for the lease, a lease vehicle for the library, which you've heard mentioned before, the lease program for vehicles, and that's going to replace our van. Electronic subscriptions, main increase is due to a transfer of $25,000 from our book budget in order to increase our digital and ebook subscriptions. Office supplies increased due to money for a few replacement computer monitors and supplies for our 3D printer. Software maintenance and office equipment both increased due to increase in our maintenance agreements for our library software and security gate and self-check maintenance agreements. The proposed capital expense budget includes 473,700 in total expenses with a $184,700 increase in one-time expenses over the previous year. So, 196,700 difference in building improvements, 15,500 increase in HVAC replacements, 11,400 increase in computer hardware, and 13,900 decrease in office equipment, and then the 25,000 decrease in books due to the transfer of funds to e-subscriptions. So, going into more detail about those capital items, this slide shows that capital expense requests include $180,000 for new carpeting for the main floor of the library, $16,000 for some new sections of shelving for our children's area, $43,500 to replace three HVAC units, $6,000 to replace two public drinking fountains and a printer replacement. So, the overall request for capital items for fiscal year 2019-2020 is 246,500 in one-time expenses, and 227,200 for recurring expenses that are computer replacements and our book budget, which is not included on this slide.
And how long does that carpet last?
I would say that with the amount of use we have, possibly 10 years, eight to 10 years with the amount of traffic, we actually had some major problems with our entryway carpet, that carpet that was installed in about 2007, 2008, and we came back in and replaced it with an even heavier duty product, so you notice that we'll have two different color carpets if you actually come in the library, the lobby and that main entrance area is one color, and then you go into the carpet that was installed in 2007, so now we're looking at 11, 12 years on that carpet.
It just time flies, because it seems like when I was involved in some of the projects, carpet, 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 it just seemed like so.
Yeah.
But you really need it somewhat for sound, so.
Yes, definitely in that building, and I wanted to talk just a little bit about that with our future budget concerns.
I was just going to say, for the benefit of our new council members, that when you step to the podium, I was going to say two things, first of all, you're not first this year, it seems like you usually have been, so congratulations on moving on, but secondly, what I was going to say, are you going to get your carpet this year? Because I know it was closed last year and maybe even the year before.
Right, yes. So, looking at our future budget concerns, these are needs that are not included in this 2019-2020 budget that I would like council just to be aware of. One is exploring space needs of the library and our options in reconfiguring or expanding our current footprint. Two is continued expansion of family services, and three is continued growth in demand for digital resources. So, our space needs, our current space is wide open, it's a wide open, big room, we need to explore our options on how to make the space more flexible in meeting community needs for study spaces, collaborative workspaces, and possibly larger meeting rooms. Currently, our meeting room is not large enough to accommodate when we have large events, so we use our outdoor spaces, we use the main library, and we try to accommodate all the attendees in just that space, or we move some of our programs over to the community center, so that's how we accommodate those large groups. Expanding our family services, as I said before, this is the area of programming where we see the largest demand, and it puts additional strains on our building space and increases our noise level, so acoustics was already mentioned, and we need a family restroom, and we need to explore ways to accommodate the competing needs of our patrons who are looking for quiet, and our children's programs, which is high energy. So, that dichotomy there does create issues, and there's many ways that libraries have worked on solving that, we just really have to take a strong look at that and figure out, do we have options there that we can implement? Growth in digital resources, I've started to address this issue in this proposed budget by requesting that transfer of funds from the library's book budget to the e-subscription budget, and this would really allow us to increase the type and amount of digital resources we offer through our website, and this is one area where I foresee future budgetary needs as we monitor how the community's using it and what we're hearing from the community as to what they want in digital resources. That concludes my presentation, any other questions I can answer? Also, before I leave, I just wanted to recognize that my assistant director, Jessica Berger, is in the back, so I wanted to thank her for all her help and support.
I want to thank you, I think we talked about it before, but she and I went on a field trip together with Dr. Hines and...
Dr. Glenn.
Dr. Glenn from UHV, and looked at some community colleges that had partnered with cities to have dual libraries, unfortunately, it doesn't look like the models that they have used would work here, but I'm hoping that something that might have come out with it was some collaborative projects as they get their new library up at UHV, which Victoria College is going to share with them, but some programs where maybe the kids could go over there and see college students and have a program over there, or the seniors could interact with the university students, and them coming down to our library and having some programs to help each other out and maybe get some...
Yes, and I wanted to thank you, Mr. Bachnight, for organizing that, and that really did start the conversation between myself and Dr. Glenn and Dr. Hines, and we have spoken again here recently, but I am kind of waiting for them to open that new building, I'm very excited to see what it looks like.
No, it's totally different than what I was expecting to go see and how I was expecting that we would be able to do things with them, but there's still some good benefits that I think that came out of it, and thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, those are all the presentations we have for today, we'll start it up again tomorrow at 5:00.
We're adjourned.